Good evening, councillors, members of the public. Welcome to this Western Area Planning Committee meeting. Before we get into the meat of the matter, draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are displayed on the screen behind me. If the fire alarm does go, it will be for real, there are no plasters planned, so please vacate the building as quickly as possible. Can you switch your mobile phones off or to silent, please? And remember, as we're webcast, to use the microphones at all times. Members of the public, just make the comment that this is a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting, and therefore we ask you to be respectful of those around you, and refrain from showing your emotions by booing, cheering, or anything else. Moving on to the main business, then. The meeting took place on the 5th of August 2015, they've been on till the last thirty minutes, is it your wish I sound them as a true record of that meeting? Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence, please.
We have apologies from councillors Stephen Hill, Martin Lea, Sam Pritchard, and John Williamson, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three, declaration of interest, Emma.
Before the meeting, I have a pecuniary interest from Carol Coburn, councillor Carol Coburn, who'll be leaving the room during consideration of the item.
Thank you very much. No others? Item four, questions from members of the public, Emma.
Namaste, Chair.
Thank you. Elizabeth, are there any updates, government guidance, or legislation that the committee should be aware of tonight?
There are none in relation to the item on this agenda, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item six, the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area Position Statement on the Current Capacity, can I ask Graham to introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Chairman, yes, obviously, this is the report that you receive every month as an update, and I think the reason I've come here tonight particularly is because you will have seen with the report that we've done some reassessment of capacity, and that's linked to the number of dwellings, but also the size of dwellings that have been permitted, and if you like, allocated SANG. It's set out in the table, but the key thing, I think, here is it's about the average occupancy of these dwellings. The avoidance strategy assumes, and certainly for monitoring purposes, it's been assumed generally that you might have an average of 2.4 persons per dwelling, I think this is derived from the census data. The avoidance strategy itself actually sets out occupancy rates for different sizes of dwellings, so if you look at the avoidance strategy, there'll be a rate for one, two, three, four, five plus bedroom dwellings, and in fact, you pay less for a small dwelling than you do for a big dwelling, because there'd be fewer people, the impact is deemed to be less. And I think it's worth just saying that the actual standard for SANG is based on the number of people, it's eight hectares per thousand population, so you might have a higher number of smaller dwellings, or a smaller number of larger dwellings, which would have the same number of people. So that's the basis for reassessing this, and we have been back through the planning permissions allocated SANG, and a significant number of those are smaller dwellings, so in fact, the capacity measured in terms of people remaining is greater, and that's why we've identified the figure that we have in the report, it's based on the 1.97 persons per dwelling, it's got a 418 unallocated capacity. So, really, I was here just to explain that, and to give you the background to why we've reassessed the capacity. Chairman, if there's any questions on the particular issue of the capacity, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Members.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Graham, as you know, I did ask the question. If I could just do a follow-up, because this is all done on averages, and you say you're going to keep it under review, would the number ever go down again? This is something I've just been thinking about after our meeting before the meeting. You know, at the moment, we can rely on, as you've got here, 418, what happens if you look at it again and realise we've been actually putting in far more, and the average number's gone up again? We'd never get to that stage, would we? I mean, once we've got the number, that stays, I take it?
I think the position in terms of what's been granted is that one assumes that by and large those schemes will be delivered, built out, and therefore that will be the effect from those schemes, so those numbers aren't going to change. Obviously, I can't predict exactly what's going to come forward in the future, and that's why we need to obviously be cautious in looking at what has been delivered, but it's quite clear that what's been happening so far has been a higher proportion of smaller dwellings, which has identified the greater capacity. We have discussed this with Natural England, Chairman, about this approach, and they were comfortable with the approach we were taking, but we do recognise we clearly will need to keep this under review, because ultimately, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that if we are bringing applications to you, which we believe can be approved, and where there's a contribution towards the SANG, we need to make sure that there's the capacity for you to approve those dwellings.
Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to query the figures. In changing the ratio, it means that you will be waiting a little bit longer for your money, you'll get less per site, by way of contribution, clearly you're going to get same amount of money in the end, but it's going to take you 22% longer, which you don't know how long that's going to be. You have made provision for that in your income. On the same subject, some developers, I'm sure, who are in the process of contributing to their SANG, or those in the recent past, might be coming to you for reimbursement. Are you prepared for that?
I think the issue about the tariff is that it is based on, ultimately, on the number of people, so if you like, there was a tariff set per person, you have the occupancy rates for different sizes of dwellings, so irrespective of what I'm saying to you this evening, what we've been collecting as a council has been the money from the schemes that have been submitted, and it may well be the case that it might take a bit longer for that capacity to be filled up, it's just down to the size of the dwellings, but my understanding, when we set the tariff originally, right at the start, was we made assumptions about income for the whole of the SANG area, the 21.25 hectares, and clearly, when we set the tariff, and it's quite right, I think, that the tariff is set at a different rate for different sizes of dwellings, because ultimately, with the impact we're trying to mitigate is the impact of the number of people, and so that is what we've been collecting all along. In terms of reimbursements, and I think the issue here is simply that if you had a number of big dwellings, you might have fewer dwellings contributing X amount, if you had a number of smaller dwellings, there might be small dwellings, but in terms of the developer, the developer pays what's set out in the tariff, which is if they've applied for a one-bedroom dwelling, they'll pay less than they would have paid for a three-bedroom dwelling, so I don't think there's any issue of reimbursement, Chairman, in relation to that.
We trust, do you want to come back, Councillor Fraser? Please do.
Please, I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please, okay.
I've been reading the avoidance strategy, quite carefully, together with the background for Actra Parlor, and I notice in clauses 1.3 and 3.5 of the avoidance statute is mentioned made of a monitoring regime, and I wondered if it might not be possible for you to insert in future agenda, underneath this carefully tabulated SANG, the figures for the monitoring, not a bland, airy reassuring statement, but the figures, so that we will have to hand the reassurance that this SANG, after six years, is actually working, because there are those among us who believe it is not.
Chairman, I think the issue here ultimately is that the report that is brought to this committee is to enable you to have a factual update on SANG capacity, and to have that in mind when you're making planning decisions. If there are questions around the policy, its effectiveness, whether the policy works, or whether the policy should be changed, however legitimate those issues may well be, I think, Chairman, they are matters for the executive and not for this meeting, so I don't think, Chairman, it would be appropriate for us to try and insert comments about whether this policy is effective each time we put these reports forward, that's clearly an issue that would have to be raised in another forum within the council.
Okay.
Please, Mr. Chairman, for those of us who aren't on the executive, we are denied any forum where in which this can be discussed.
I will correct you there, because we will be asking this to go to community ONS or to a joint ONS, and everyone is entitled to attend those meetings, either as a member or an observer, and speak. Indeed, you can attend any meeting of the executive and ask to speak, providing you let Robin Taylor know before 12 o'clock on the day of the executive, so there is plenty of opportunity to come, I think this is a subject we all need to understand fully, and it will come about, I'm sure. Councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to be absolutely clear in my own mind that I've got this square. As I understand it, we charge an amount to a developer based on the size of the houses which he's building. We have taken in the past the average number of people per dwelling of all sizes of dwelling to be 2.4. We have now said, and have always known, that a one-bedroom dwelling has an average of X number of people, a two-bedroom has X, and so on, and have now worked that backwards. And I'm assuming that in the future, as a development is approved, then the calculation will be made, not that we have used this many dwellings from the available SANG, but that there are that many one-bedrooms, that many two-bedrooms, that many three-bedrooms, that equates to this number of people, and therefore that will then tell us what we have taken off the SANG. I'm right in that assumption, and can I just continue with that, that I believe that asking our officers to make any kind of comment about the effectiveness of the policy is going to be a difficult thing, because as I understand it, Natural England have no evidence that it works either.
I think in answer to the Councillor Storey's comments about the capacity, clearly it is something we're going to have to keep a close eye on in terms of what is being approved, so as part of our monitoring processes, obviously, we'll be looking at, and we already have that data, but we're looking not only at what we're permitting numerically, but also being very mindful of the sizes of dwellings that are coming through, so that will be part of the work, we'll be keeping that information as part of the monitoring. A brief comment on Natural England, and that is simply to say, we obviously need to take our steer from Natural England as well, and obviously, Natural England are not saying anything to us at the moment, which causes us to question the validity of the approach, but as I said earlier, that's really something for a different forum.
Just make a point, that Natural England were due to present a paper to a group of local councils on, I think it was the 11th of September, that meeting has been postponed because they're not ready, they haven't got the paper up and into a presentable state yet, they've had about, I think, six months since the last meeting, so things are not running very smoothly in their area, but certainly, it's due in October, November time, so we hope to hear more from Natural England at that stage. Councillor McLachlan.
Thank you, Chairman. What I was going to ask, Graham, is that is it possible to see the figures on the number of one, two, three, four bedroom and five plus that have been built, because something like a thousand houses have been built so far, according to this report, it's actually quite surprising that the variation from the 2.4 is so big, and that we're building houses that are so different from the typical pattern of houses in Farnham, or for that matter, anywhere else, because whenever you see figures to do with the average occupancy, whether it's Waverley, whether it's Farnham, whether it's the South East, it's always a figure of about 2.4, so it is actually quite surprising that the thousand houses that were built are so different from the typical pattern, so it'd be interesting to see the actual numbers, I'd quite like to do that, if you could provide them.
I'm happy to do that, Chairman, I have a table, I mean, the figures as they stand in terms of the monitoring we've done on this up till now indicates that 200 one-bedroom dwellings, 465 two-bed, 171 three-bed, 87 four-bed, and 32 five-plus bedrooms, and don't forget, I suspect quite a significant contribution to that in terms of the smaller dwellings would have come through the planning approval for Brightwell's, and it's obviously, it's not just dwellings that have been built, by the way, it's obviously dwellings that have...
Yeah, sure, that's the figures I'm interested in, the ones that you just referred out.
Yes, I'm sure we can organise circulating that.
Yeah, if you could circulate that.
Thank you very much.
I'd make a final comment, actually, you could do it by a number of people, but the problem is that the number of people in a one-bedroom appears to be 1.31, two-bedroom 1.76, and so on, if you'd done it by people, you'd actually have fractions all over the place, but it doesn't actually, you're quite right, it doesn't make any difference to what the developers pay, you're absolutely correct in what you say there, because they're paying by dwelling on the assumption that a one-bedroom has 1.31, et cetera, et cetera, but it would actually been, if you'd done it by people, you wouldn't have this problem of it changing all the time, because it would then be accurate all the way through. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any...
Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Blackdon, please.
You know how naive I am, and one of the main problems is that at times, we don't start thinking about the worry over the size of SANGs, because the basic idea of a SANG, or was when we were trying to prevent SANGs being moved to places like Church Crookham, was that it was when you had to take your dogs out in order that they may relieve themselves. Now, this, we deal very much in terms of houses and humans, but not in the numbers of dogs that will have to be using this, I merely talk from a practical point of view, which is shocking, and I fully agree, but it's something I think we should keep in mind, the reason why a SANG is being set up in the first place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, there are no other questions, members, could I ask, are you content to note this update?
Noted.
Thank you very much, indeed. Moving on, applications for planning permission. Thank you, Councillor. Any site inspection being necessary, they will be held on the 29th of September, it's time to be aggrieved. Can I just ask, if you see a planning application on the weekly list that you think is contentious in any way, shape, or form, just talk to the committee's secretariat and say, you know, in view of what's coming up on the agenda, I might like a site visit on this, and they can then sort out a site visit prior to the meeting, so that the planning system moves on a little more rapidly, because invariably, if we delay today for a site meeting, we're already into a late determination, which doesn't please Elizabeth Sims or anyone else, I can assure you. So can we just look at our planning applications as they come in, and if you think something requires a site visit, ask earlier rather than later? So, thank you for that. Planning application, this is item A1, WA2015, oblique 1149, the Coach House, Tilford Road, Farnham, GU98HR. Tim, we'd like to introduce this application, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, starting off with the site location, the site's located on the western side of Tilford Road, it is within the developed area of special environmental quality in south Farnham, the site currently has a detached dwelling and outbuilding, access to the site is off the Tilford Road, I should mention at this point as well, the access is a shared access with the neighbour, Lee Cottage, to the south. This is an aerial photograph, roughly outlining the site there, just giving an indication of the existing dwelling on the site, to the south, there is a stable building that belongs to Lee Cottage, which is there, the site surroundings is largely residential plots, you could say the character of the area is somewhat semi-rural. The proposal is for a replacement dwelling, outlined in dark grey here is the outline of the proposed replacement dwelling, it would be set further back by 5.6 metres in comparison to the existing dwelling on the site, a retaining wall will be proposed at the back as well, and the proposed ground floor plan here provides a better view of the proposed parking arrangements, where you'd have parking at the front, and also one down the side, the general layout here, kitchen, diner, family area at the back, living room at the front, pedestrian access into the proposed dwelling would be on the north side elevation. Proposed first floor and roof plan, four bedrooms are proposed for the replacement dwelling, from the roof plan, you can see the rather simplistic, you could say, layout with the use of barn hips on each end, dormer windows on the north elevation, and a single-storey projection to the south, and here we have the proposed front elevation, the proposed materials would be facing brickwork at ground floor, tile hanging at first floor, timber boarding to the dormers, and clay tiles to the roof. This is the proposed north side elevation, showing the proposed access and dormer is in the north, and the rear elevation here, and the proposed south elevation here, members will note that there are no first floor windows proposed on the south elevation, this has been done on purpose to ensure no overlooking to the south. You'll note on page 21 of the agenda that in support of the scheme, the applicants have provided some sweat path analysis undertaken, showing how cars could enter and exit the site, and also park, so you'll note here, some vehicle movement, really trying to demonstrate how cars could enter and park and leave the site. Just running through some site photographs, this is a view from the entrance from Tilford Road, on the left, you'll note the existing building here, so the proposal would be 5.6 metres further back than this, there's access gates here to the neighbour to the south called Lee Cottage, officers have been informed during the application process that the applicant's dwelling has a right of access over this site, there is however, rights to park here for Lee Cottage, should they wish to, and the sweat path analysis I showed you earlier, and that's on page 21, has taken into account access to the site through here. This is the rear of the existing dwelling, you know the design of the existing dwelling is largely of a garage structure, it did used to belong to Tilford Cottage as a garage, however, that use changed in 2008 with a lawful development certificate to an independent dwelling. And really, members, providing the view of the side boundary treatment there, you'll note there's a difference in site levels between the site and the neighbour to the south, this roof here, you can see, is the back of the stable building, and that's a rear view of the existing garden to the site, that's a view of the existing access off the Tilford Road. So, members, in terms of the key determining issues for this application, as outlined earlier, the sites within the developed area, where in principle a replacement dwelling could be considered acceptable, subject to its visual impact and impact on residential amenity, which is why I've drawn your attention to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side of your screen, we have been in consultation with the Highway Authority throughout the application in regard to highway safety and parking, both us as officers and the Highway Authority are satisfied with the proposal as laid out. So, Chairman, officers' recommendation for permission to be granted is set out in the agenda, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim, this is an item for public speaking, I'd invite the supporter Jane Wondleto to give us three minutes from the time he starts talking. Thank you very much.
Dear members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity of addressing you this evening, your officers in Surrey County Highways fully support the application, as you've heard, the seven letters of objection that have been received all relate only to parking and access across the shared forecourt, they do not object to the size, location, or design of the replacement dwelling. As none of the objectors have spoken against the application and recommendation this evening, I believe they too now acknowledge and accept that the additional information of the sweat path analysis shows that there is no parking or access issues. The Coach House is a lawful dwelling with access and parking on the front forecourt in accordance with its land registry deeds, which have been confirmed by the applicant's solicitor. It was originally the garage to Lee Cottage, and this is why the two properties share an access. As you will have seen on the screen, the application is into two parts, at the front is a shared forecourt with two allocated parking spaces for the use of the Coach House, to the rear of the site is the Coach House itself and its garden. The proposal before you comprises a replacement dwelling, re-siting the Coach House further back into the site, to allow for parking of three cars in the front garden of the Coach House, well away from the shared forecourt, and the existing allocated spaces used by the Coach House. Thus, the three new spaces are completely independent and away from the shared forecourt, and do not obstruct in any way the access rights for either Lee Cottage or the Coach House. The Highway Authority agrees that sweat path analysis, prepared by the Transport Consultants RGP, shows clearly that three cars can be parked on the three new spaces clear of the shared forecourt. All three cars can enter and leave the site independently and in a forward gear across the two allocated spaces. The up-to-date parking layout, as shown on page 21, shows this very clearly. Only the objector at Lee Cottage has any rights over the forecourt, and these access rights are not impinged by the proposed development. All of the other objectors live some way away from the application sites and not affected by the proposal at all. The traffic consultants RGP sweat path analysis confirms and supports the Highway Authority. I ask you again to acknowledge your officers' recommendation and approve this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wondleto. Members, it's open to you. Councillor McLachlan.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll say first of all that I'm perfectly okay with the principle of development here, there's no problem about that at all, but I can't agree with what's been said about the parking manoeuvring arrangements. If I can start first of all by referring to the chart on page nine, the proposed ground floor plan, you see there that it's quite right that it's better than it was in the previous withdrawn application, that the house has been moved back 5.6 metres from the previous position, but that parking arrangement shown there is just not possible actually, in that if you have two cars parked on the right-hand side, that actually blocks the exit to the site and the entrance from the site, and that Lee Cottage has the right to park cars on the left-hand side immediately below what you'll see there as the blank space. The other thing is, I'll just point out that the single car in the parking space on the left, it looks like a quite comfortable place for a single car, but when we look at the sweat path analysis, we'll see something slightly different. Also, the bin centre, I'll just point out for an information, that the bin store is shown behind the single car, and when we go to the sweat path analysis, it appears to have moved, and I presume that the moved position is a new position. So if we can look at now at page 21, which is the three sweat path analysis plans, the first thing I'd point out is that the two cars parked together on the left of the building, and these cars appear to be average family-sized cars, something like a Ford Focus or a Vauxhall Astra, because they're approximately about four metres long and about two metres wide, they're parked so close together and so close to the house and the fence, they wouldn't actually be possible to open the doors, and they're also parked so close to the house itself, that it wouldn't be possible to actually exit from the utility room and reach the bins, nor would it... Nor would it be possible to take the bins out, which you have to do every week and sometimes twice a week if you've got a brown bin. In terms of the position of the second car, the third car rather, that's parked in the front of the house on the right hand side, where that's parked, it completely blocks the access to the front door. You can't actually get up the path to go into the front door. And it's shown the wrong way around by the way, because when you look at the manoeuvring of that car, it actually should be parked the other way around because it has to reverse into that position. And once it's done so, the driver wouldn't be able to get out through his door. He'd have to actually leave by the passenger side. Now, these cars have to be parked in these positions because when you look at the sweat path analysis, if they're parked anywhere different, the cars would finish up hitting each other. So if we look at the manoeuvring now, if we take the first one, the one at the top, the car to enter the site has to actually drive in and do a sharp left into the corner, immediately up against the fence, then it has to do a reversing manoeuvre to come up right against the front of the house. And as I say, it has to park so close to the house that the driver wouldn't be able to get out. When it comes to leave, the car has to do a very sharp left turn, almost within its own length, then reverse back again towards the house, avoiding hitting the house, and then it moves. I mean, these are manoeuvres that require small cars that are highly manoeuvrable and pretty skillful drivers actually. And if you come to look at the other two, the manoeuvring of the other two cars that are parked to the left of the house, if you take the manoeuvring of the one on the left hand side first of all, there's no problem in driving into that location. But when it comes to reverse back out into the corner in order to be able to drive away frontwards, it has to go extremely close to the first car and go right up against the fence. Then it has to drive forward, dismissing the house and dismissing the other car. And if you look at the right hand car, again, there's no problem driving into that position. But again, when it reverses, it has to go so close to the house, it almost touches the house as far as I can see. And then it go into that position and then drive away again. It seems to me that this is just completely impractical. It requires, what if the owners of the house didn't have Ford Focuses? What if they had Volvo estates? What if they had four by fours or people carriers? It just wouldn't work at all. And although the applicants have actually made an effort to improve, and they have improved a lot in the previous situation, they haven't improved it enough. And in fact, if you move the house more than five point six metres back, if you move, say, another two or three metres, you'd easily create enough space to do the parking and manoeuvring without all these problems. And you'd also actually create the opportunity, if you look at the plan of the site on page eight, the applicant actually owns land immediately behind the old stables of Lee House. If the house had moved a little bit further back, they could actually drive past the house and park in the space just behind the stables. So I just think they've tried to do the minimum to make it work. And I'm astonished that Surrey Highways thinks that this is a workable plan. And I'm a little bit surprised that the officers think it's a workable plan as well. So I just don't think it's possible. I don't know if other members agree with me. But I think at the very least there should be a site visit so that members can see it on the site. But I would actually recommend that it be refused and that the applicant be asked to consider moving the house another two or three metres further back, which would solve all the problems. That's what I have to say, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. councillor Hargreaves.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I know Tilford Road very well. I travel it every single day virtually of my life. It's narrow, it's windy, it's busy road and when it's wet, it's quite lethal. So today I slowed down and the only way to have a look at the actual site was to stick my nose slightly in, and I have a small car, it's Golf. And I looked at it, there was a big van there. If I'd driven in, I know it's four metres longer now, I couldn't have turned, not with other cars there at all. I cannot believe that four cars, if they were in a hurry, I cannot see them very carefully backing, toing and froing in the slippery path, especially at night, especially when it's pouring with rain. In the hurry, they would perhaps find it far easier to take another dangerous option and that would be backing out of the site, because that would be easier, because there'd be less cars to avoid on either side and not a house to touch. I have not a problem with the dwelling and I don't have a problem with it overall, but I cannot accept the parking as it is. I think they should push the house back further. I'm surprised a site visit hasn't been asked for because it really is a dangerous area. And I currently cannot go with the officers on this application. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Blackdon.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I agree entirely with what councillor McLeod has said and councillor Jill Hargreaves have said. It is not, well amongst other things, the situation is going to be even more dire when the waste lorries come in to empty the bins. Because nowadays, these bins are lifted hydraulically and we're not up against a very, very small vehicle here. We're up against a large vehicle that has probably much more difficulty in turning around in the tight corners as required. I think this really needs rethinking. And I entirely endorse the fact that a narrow area for two cars side by side, where you can't open the door of the car in either direction. So how you actually get in is at the moment to me a bit of a mystery. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Officers, do you wish to come in at this point? I've got a few comments to make myself, but I think you're better first. Carry on.
Thank you, Chairman. Really, it's just in regard to a comment from councillor Blackdon. The refuse vehicle wouldn't enter the site and that wouldn't change. It's a lawful dwelling at the moment. So just to confirm that the refuse wouldn't enter the site and reverse out onto the road. It would simply stop on the road to take the bins and then move on. Thank you.
Just one quick question. There is accommodation on the site at the moment, as we know, has been legal for the last seven or eight years. There are vehicles that use that parking area at the moment. How many are required on the current location under our parking plan?
It's two point five, Chairman, under the council's guidelines for the proposed dwelling.
That are already there, so let's take it as two. And this is a scheme for three that's approved by RGP and Surrey Highways. Is that correct?
Yes, so four more comments from the County Highway Authority that they're, we did notify them specifically on the sweat path analysis and they have no objection to it. And they're satisfied that the term is accurate.
Thank you for that. councillor Blackdon, you want to come back?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I still think that we're in a very difficult situation as far as the parking and all the rest of it is concerned. I've always found that the verdicts of highways, authorities have been extraordinarily optimistic. And this is as the result of the four years that I've been working, all four and a half years I've been working as a councillor. I honestly believe that in this case we should do a site visit in cars. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
A suggestion has been made for a site visit. No other way of getting there, I might say. But the building isn't there yet, you know, it hasn't been moved back five metres. Therefore, I think it's a little... Yeah, okay. Do you have a second for your proposal for a site visit? Councillor Hargreaves, can I have a show of hands, those in favour of a site visit, please? Those against? Sorry, I feel that the site visit is unnecessary. I also know the area and I feel that we've had plenty of time to have a look ourselves and to look at the sweat path analysis as submitted by RGP and Surrey Highways. councillor McLeod.
Can I come back, Chairman, with your permission? I do think it's necessary for the officers to comment on some of the points that I made. Can it at all be satisfactory to have cars parked where you can't open doors? And where a driver would have to come out at the passenger door. Can it be at all satisfactory to be cars parked that block the entrance to the house in order for the sweat path analysis to work, both in terms of the front door and the rear door? Can it be satisfactory to have cars blocking the bin store so you can't actually get to the bins to put anything in them? And to actually take the bins out to the edge of the door? If the officer is satisfied that that's satisfactory, I would be totally amazed. But I'd like to hear some response on these points. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask the officers to make their comments.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The standard parking spaces for each car is two point four by four point eight. And what this site does accommodate that. Further, the guidelines for a property this size is two point five spaces rather than three. And the additional analysis that was submitted during the application was in response to concerns over access and parking. So really what this tries to demonstrate is that vehicles can enter and leave via the access into the site and provide parking.
Are you actually saying that people can actually get into these cars and leave them? Can they open the doors and get in and out of the car? It looks pretty obvious they can. Does it look at all possible for the driver of the right hand car can actually leave the car once he's parked in that position? Can people get past these cars to enter the doors of the house? Are you saying that these are the things that are all possible? Because they don't appear to be from the diagram.
We'll have a little check.
And I'll add that these are not big cars either. These are Ford Focus sized cars. And the owners of the house could easily have bigger cars than these.
Aren't they schematic?
They are typical family cars, Chairman, the size of a Ford Focus, say. They're not Volvo estates, they're not people carriers. And there's plenty of them around in Farnham. And also I'll add the point that you have to be a very, very skilled driver to carry out these manoeuvres as shown here and avoid hitting the house and avoid hitting the other cars.
And four wheel steer.
I come back to a point I made a little earlier in that the dwelling on site at the moment has cars to enter and leave, does it not?
It's got two cars.
Yes, two.
There's two spaces.
But we're now moving five metres back.
This has to do with three cars.
Paul.
Yeah, if I can just perhaps provide a bit more information on the parking space that is available on the site. Having scaled the approved, the submitted site plan, bear in mind the standard parking space is two point four by four point eight metres, which normally allows people to obviously park, leave the car and come back to the car. In terms of the front part of the site here, that dimension there to there is six metres, which can accommodate clearly the width of two parked cars with adequate space to manoeuvre. On this side, admittedly, there is a...
Can we let the officer finish, please?
Admittedly, there is a tight point about a lot across here from where the chimney is, here to here. But only if it needs a car to be slightly manoeuvred slightly forward or backwards. And this space from here to here and here to here is almost five metres wide, which again can accommodate two lots of two point four. So there is actually, although it's really, it is quite tight, there is sufficient space there for cars to park people to enter and leave their vehicles. So all we're saying to you is that the information we have in the county view is that, so it is, they just say three vehicles, the requirement is for two and a half. But our view is that looking at a scale plan, there is sufficient space for these spaces to be used properly and for cars to enter and leave and fall here.
Thank you, Paul. Want to come back? councillor McLeod?
Thank you, Tim. I obviously accept your measurements actually, if that's correct. If two can park side by side and it just doesn't look like that from the diagram. Coming to my other points, is it satisfactory for the cars to be so near the doors and to be blocking the entrance to the front door? And also be exact that you'd have to be an extremely skilled driver to carry out some of these manoeuvres or not?
Elizabeth Sims.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to see if I can respond to that. I think there are two elements of this. There's whether or not the layout and the provision of car parking spaces ultimately results in an unsafe situation. And I think having regard to the quite detailed analysis that the County Highway Authority have provided on this and the additional information, I think we can be satisfied as a planning authority that it isn't unsafe. It may be a busy road and it may be that there will be situations where any resident, including existing residents in the existing house, coming in or out of that access will need to be careful because it is a busy road. But that's a lawful dwelling there at the moment and the situation is only making it slightly more intense by increasing the requirement of one space on the curtilage. The other aspect to bear in mind is whether or not, notwithstanding that, the arrangement is inconvenient to the prospective occupiers. And I think that's the point you're possibly getting at councillor McLeod by suggesting that the cars will be parked in fairly close proximity to the windows. Now, that is relevant to your consideration, but it shouldn't be overriding in that at the end of the day, there is enough space on this site for the replacement dwelling and sufficient parking to serve the dwelling. It will be a matter of choice of the occupants as to how they use it and whether or not they park too close to the window or not. But I don't think it should result in a reasonable objection to the proposal that the car will be parked close to the window. I don't think that would amount to something that you could reasonably reject the application on. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Potter.
Chairman, thank you. I know the Telford Road, and I take on board the comments about the safety of the actual Telford Road, but I think that we're losing sight of some key points here, which I think you've raised and officers have raised, in that a precedent, to a certain extent, has been set, because there is already a building there. I think it's really helpful that Mr. Hardwick has given us now more in terms of the actual dimensions of that parking area, and I have to say, I would love to have that much parking space on my driveway, because I frequently have a car almost up to the front door and a car that I can see very closely from the lounge window, so I think, you know, whilst it may not to some of us seem ideal, we have to actually look at this and think, there are other areas in Farnham, other places where many of us live, where, you know, parking is far tighter, and to my mind, given the dimensions that we have, given the analysis that has come through and been shown, not just by the County Highway Authority, but actually by the applicant in terms of movement and how it would work, I would have, I can't see a legitimate reason to refuse this, and I also think that if we do, it will go straight to an appeal, and I don't think we've really got very firm grounds at all for a refusal. So on that alone, I will be supporting it this evening, because given the dimensions that Mr. Hardwick has now given, I feel that there is adequate provision. Thank you.
Thank councillor Potter. Boring a little bit to give a little bit of history, but in October 2013, waveless parking requirements were passed. All our developers bar one have complied with them ever since, and they surpassed the requirement set by Surrey County Council. So if Surrey County Council were looking at this planning application, they wouldn't require three parking slots. I think it's two, isn't it, maximum, on a four-bedroom place? We require 2.5, which makes it three, and that's history, and that's the way waverly have, in this rural area, have adopted and accepted, or all the developers bar one have accepted that. I think that's worth mentioning. councillor MacLeod.
Can I make a final comment, Mr. Jim? I accept much of what is said, and I understand the reasons why people are arguing against what I'm saying, but I would simply say there's a very simple solution to the things that I've suggested as problems, which is to move the house just a little bit further back, and I believe that would be in the interest of the applicant, as well as in the interests of the other people who visit the site. But I'll leave it at that, and people have to make up their own mind. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Hodgson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fully satisfied there's plenty of space for three cars there. My only concern will be if a car ever had to reverse onto the Telford Road, and that's clearly not the case under any circumstances here, so I'm perfectly happy with the application.
Thank you. Members, if there are no further questions, let's move on to the recommendation. The recommendation is that subject conditions one to seven, and informative one is set out on pages 27 and 30 of the report, permission be granted. Can I have a show of hands of those in favour of granting?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Those against?
One, two.
Abstentions? Thank you very much. Permission is granted. That completes the meeting. Thank you all very much indeed.